We'll call the Troy Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, December 11th to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Walkie.
Here.
Mrs. Early.
Here.
Mr. Titterington.
Here.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Here.
Mr. Emery.
Here.
Mayor Oda, we have a quorum.
Okay, the meetings from the previous minutes from October 23rd, November 13th and November 20th, bring your packets. Are there any revisions, changes, additions or deletions? If not, do you entertain-
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, were approved. Thank you, Sid. Okay, the first item is a historical district application, certificate of appropriateness for a sign at 18 East Canal Street. Does staff have a recommendation?
Yes, sir. The applicant, Banded applicant, Banded signs is requesting a certificate of appropriateness from the planning commission to consider the installation of a projecting sign at the property located at 18 East Canal Street. An address change was issued after this report, changing the address to 240 South Walnut Street. The applicant is proposing to install a 27-inch by 180-inch, 30.3 square feet projecting sign on the southeast corner of the building. The sign will have a white background and black three-dimensional lettering. Design manual, section 5.7 states, "Three-dimensional elements are strongly encouraged." The bracket or attachment device should be architecturally appropriate to the building design. Only use traditional brackets with traditional architecture. The proposed sign meets these requirements. Staff recommends approval of the proposed sign based on the following. The proposed sign complies with section 5.7 of the design manual. The lettering is three-dimensional and the bracket is architecturally appropriate.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
The only thing I had for you is it said, uh, one, the original said, uh, I'm sorry, the original was 18 East Canal Street. You said 240 and then it showed up on the application as 200 South Walnut Street. So-
The correct address is 240.
240, okay.
Yeah, that's the final address.
So it went from 18 to 200 and then 200 to 240 because we're recognizing a new address for this business-
Okay.
-in that existing building.
Okay.
And I take it the 18 East Canal is just the opposite corner of the-
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Good observation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Lighting of the sign, how's that gonna be done?
So it's gonna be like a halo effect, similar to what we did at 226 South Market, Mike Twiss's TDN, old TDN building, where the, and the Mayflower, where the, it's a halo light that's not shining through the sign, but the backdrop of the sign. So therefore, historically, we've allowed that illumination.
Any other questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second for approval. Roll call, please.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Mrs. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Application is approved.
Okay, next item on the agenda is presentation update for the work on the zoning code.
I'm going to put the screen down, so I don't know if some of you want to move to around the side. There's also a chair here, next to Mr. McGary.
Hmm. No, no.
Mr. Emery, can you push that one chair up?
You got your wall burger? Sandy?
Yes. No, we're good. Do you want to tell him?
Here, I-
He likes rolling it.
Yeah. Enough, man. Turn the lights on. This is not good.
Okay. Yes, you heard? Oh, no, I think it's good. Good.
All right, how about it, David?
Okay. Uh, huh? So it's great to be back with you guys. Just here to kind of give you an update on where we're at with what we're referring to. I heard the term zoning code. We have the title up here as Unified Development Code. When we started this project, it was just the zoning code that we were looking at rewriting. However, after some review, both internally, staff as well as from us, it was determined that there were some things in subdivision regulations that needed some editing. So that's why we're referring to it as the Unified Development Code, because it brings in not only zoning, but signs as well as subdivision regulations. So we're just gonna hit kind of the highlights of where we are today. We're very much in the middle of the writing process for that, for this. And of course, I heard before the meeting, some people talking about tonight's meeting with the advisory committee. So we do have a meeting tonight. I'd wanna make sure that I mention that. And it's at 6:00 at the junior high school. So anyone that's here is welcome to come as well. We're gonna be kind of getting into the, more into the weeds at that meeting, so to speak. We're really gonna talk about landscaping. From what we've heard thus far, we're not completely sure as to how to write the landscaping provisions. So we've got some exercises with the advisory committee to kind of give us some more information that will help guide us. So I wanted just to kind of briefly mention that before we get into the rest of the presentation. So just some of the goals. Again, I mentioned the zoning, subdivision regulations, sign ordinance. And we wanna make sure that we're complying with state and federal law. And we really wanna make sure it's user-friendly. And then, you know, the great thing about this project is that we just completed, of course, we just completed a comprehensive plan. And I have found that that background is so helpful with writing good policy for the code. So we've definitely, we love it when we get projects like that, where we get both. So these are the chapters that are darker, that we have sent over to staff and they have reviewed, and we're making revisions. We like to call this an iterative process. So it really is, we send to staff, they review it, and then eventually, we're gonna be sending it out to the advisory committee. And then after the advisory committee has a shot at it, then we kind of put it in more of a full draft of all the chapters. And then we bring it forward for public review and for this body's review, and then ultimately, of course, the council. The areas, the chapters that you see that aren't as bolded, the four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, we have internal working drafts of those. But we've got some work left to do there before we can get it over to staff. But we actually have started on every single chapter at this point. So I'm starting to see it come together and very shortly, I'm sure, I mean, staff's seen some of it, obviously, from what you, from the ones that are bolded. But it's, I can see it really starting to come together here in the last few weeks. So the intro, the chapter one's very basic. It really establishes the purposes. One thing I do like to ask the planning commission, and it's not a question that has to be answered today, but there are different, or yeah, a question has to be answered today, is there are different philosophies on when you want your new code to be effective. We find that there is Ohio law that gives, that requires it to be at least, I believe, 30 days. I'll double-check on that. But there are jurisdictions that like to have a little bit longer timeframe. So that's something we're gonna be talking to staff more about. But if anyone has any really strong opinions on that, you know, please feel free to discuss.
So you, you might wanna look at the state code as well as our own code, because, you know, if you're talking about overall effective date of a new code, I can tell you that on behalf of the council, they'd like to see, they'd like to see it effective as soon as possible, at least certain members of the, of the council, particularly with regard to any changes contemplated with the subdivision regulation portion.
Okay.
Overall, though, as we work through this process, once it gets from the planning commission as a recommendation to council, it will definitely go far beyond 30 days because there will be a, scheduled a public hearing that will have to be at least 30 days after it's advertised in the paper. And so the way we run it is, you'll at least go to council meetings with readings of the proposed legislation. There will be a public hearing at that second reading. It will then get referred the next week to a committee of council. And then, at the earliest, it would be deliberated and maybe voted on at that third reading. That's every bit of 45 days, typically anywhere from 60 to 75 days from the day that the planning commission recommends it to the council. So we've, we've got a pretty set process unless there's some controversial items that the, as we go through it as a planning commission, we may wanna go an additional meeting or two or whatever. But we'll, our process is typically pretty set in stone.
Okay. Good deal. All right, well, I think probably at our next check-in meeting, what we may wanna do is really start fleshing out. We've kind of had it kind of vague, but I'm to a point where I could, I feel more confident about setting some things in stone. So we'll do that and knowing that, that you've got like, like Patrick said, something pretty much set in stone, so we can kind of craft what I call an adoption timeline. So we'll, when I say these check-in meetings, we meet with staff at American Structure Point every, bi-weekly via Teams. And so those are the kind of things that we go over on those meetings. So, um, so this right here is what we're referring to on your left side, is what we're calling the new base zoning districts. So we have had some comments about potentially changing some of the names. That's another thing we wanna go through with staff. So you may see some, some different names there. But I wanna speed forward to this chart, because this really kind of helps. Now, I believe I've shown this before to the planning commission, but we've really made some edits here. This is where we're looking at your, your comprehensive plan, the classifications, those character classes that we worked on so hard, and then comparing it to your existing. I know it says previous zoning classifications here, but that's how it'll be adopted in the code. So that's your current regulations today. And then we're looking at where we can consolidate these zoning districts. So we found from the beginning that you had a lot of different single-family residential districts, very, very minor edits. So the good thing here is we found a number of things that we can consolidate, and this will go on to the next page. So there are a lot of benefits to this, but one of the biggest things is, it really gives developers more options and their ways to build in things that are what we refer to as conditional, or excuse me, like additional permitted use standards. And so I'm gonna flip through real quick to that chart. I'll come back here. These are what we refer to as the use standard. So this is the chapter that we've drafted so far. And you can see that we each use there a lot. So when I have 40, 41, this is literally, that's how many different uses we have with additional requirements in them. So these are a couple of good examples. Personal services, those things are kind of grouped, you know, like, like whether it be a beauty shop, barber shop kind of thing, that's one of those type uses. Someone's coming in, it could even be legal services or whatever it may be. It's just the typical use where someone parks, they go in, they get a service, and they, they come back out. So like, for example, in your office residential district, we don't wanna have the feedback we receive, and it makes sense, we don't wanna have too large of buildings. So we write in as an additional standard, yes, you can do it, but here are the things that, additional things that you have to have. So again, a couple of other areas that we were able to consolidate that are six and are seven, as well as the industrial districts there. And then the neighborhood commercial, the OC1 and B1, again, very minor differences there. So one thing that is important, that sometimes gets not thought about, is the purpose statements. Because if you can't really write a purpose statement for a zoning district, then you have to ask, well, why exactly does that zoning district exist? We, as that last chart shows, we're always trying to match the character of an area to the zoning of the area. So these, when we draft these purpose statements, we're always kind of looking back as, and this is a good way for your, your staff in the future, if there are any edits or things that need to be done to the code, they can come back, take a look at the purpose statement, see if that change kind of meets the purpose statement, and then move forward. So we spent some time on that. And then this is what we call land use matrix. I think we, we may have highlighted this before in a planning commission meeting, but it's really important for when you guys get the full draft, so that you understand kind of what these, you know, what, what you're looking at without having to dig deep through the document. If it says P, it means it's permitted by rights, it doesn't mean there are additional, any additional standards. If it's a double line, which the double dashes up there, it means it's prohibited. And then if it says US, it means additional use standards are required, and that's the slide I showed earlier. So we have a really regimented way that we go about creating these, and then we look to tweak it from there. So this is something your staff's reviewed, and of course, there's more than just this table right here. I do wanna flip on to, that's another example, these are just additional examples of that. Similarly, these dimensional standards we put into an easy-to-read chart. You can't, from a staff perspective, you know, I've been in Tim and Austin, Austin's shoes, and it's so much easier with these charts to just, someone asks a question, you just go and find it. You know, a lot of times, we'll have clients that'll say, well, can't you give me the list and the chart? I think staff is right in, in this case, to not have that list. What we find is when jurisdictions have both of those, one will get edited and the other won't, and you'll end up with conflicts. So the reason I spend a lot of time on this is because over time, once you get used to this code, it'll make things a lot easier. But there will be some times where you'll say, okay, I just wanna see what is permitted in the UR district, and people will flip to that, you, okay, where's the, where it says everything is permitted, UR. It's not organized in that fashion anymore. But it is organized in a fashion that is easier for someone to, to ask specific questions because it's organized so that the most important information's up at front. And then as you move down through it, you get into more, more and more of the weeds until you finally get into the definitions section. This is something that staff asked us to do, is really to flesh out what we call the temporary uses. And I think this is gonna be real helpful. So it's just another example of a chart, but we've done this for the accessory and temporary uses, which we don't always do that. But you guys have some real, a real need to because of some of the specific requirements that you have today. And we, that's typical for, for developing more, more developed communities to want that, so.
What exactly is a temporary use?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So it, basically, when we say a temporary use, it's something that is, now, this chart is either accessory or temporary. So I'll start with accessory, just so, because they're, they're two different things. What you're seeing right now is the accessory uses up here, not the temporary uses. So the accessory uses are the ones that are not the primary use, it's not the main thing on the property. So for example, outdoor dining, you know, that's not gonna be in the, a main use of a building. But it's an important additional use. Outdoor storage. So there're gonna be areas of town, maybe you wouldn't, you know, want the outdoor dining. Drive, drive-in and drive-through facility, that's, that's another one. Even to beekeeping is another one that, you know, you've got agricultural, very large properties that maybe some agricultural uses could go on, as long as there's some additional standards. So when we say temporary, those are those things like during the middle of construction, where there may be a building that needs to be there temporarily as a neighborhood is getting developed. You may need a dumpster to handle these things. But they're things that, as soon as the building process is done, you want, you want for them to be removed. Okay.
Several questions, comments. So one, one issue that we've run into more recently than in the past is how vague our accessory definition has been.
Mm-hmm.
And so one of the critical things is to make sure that the definition of accessory includes the provision that you must have a, have a permitted principal use-
Yeah.
-to then be able to identify, designate, and segregate that accessory use.
Mm-hmm.
We think in our interpretation of the code, when we put several sections together, it's clear. We've been told that it's not as clear as it could be. We talked about temporary uses a little bit. If you go back to the, the chart that shows the previous zoning designations, um, yes, and one more, if you go back, yeah. So SU, semi-urban residential, you've got three residential districts combined into one UDC code-
Mm-hmm.
...or designation. All, all three of those have separate conditions, setbacks, et cetera. Is the intent with the UDC to have all three of those have the same setbacks?
Uh, yes. However, we have what we call a setback averaging requirement that works for existing neighborhoods as an alternative compliance. So basically, if, and you may have, do you have that in-
We do. We call it the block front average, yeah.
Yeah, block, block front average. So, but it would, the intent is that, you know, moving forward, should there be a new development, that would be built to, to the new standard. Those setbacks are so similar that with the additional, with that requirement, what was the term you guys used? Because I don't wanna confuse-
No, the block front average.
Block front average is a different term than I typically do use. But that alternative approval method essentially allows for that consolidation without any disruption to the neighborhood.
Okay. But one of the distinct differences between the 2.3 and the 3B, and the 3B was something that's been put together within the last 16, 17 years, is the minimum lot sizes.
Mm-hmm.
And that's always one of the very sensitive issues that the NIMBYs bring up, whether they're, they reside in town or they're adjacent in the township, and how dense the development might be, what the minimum lot sizes are, et cetera. So I, and I don't know what the new SU district will show, but I think it's important, as you develop a final presentation to, to the council, and particularly, to the planning and the council, that somehow, maybe with different colors or overlays, it shows, you know, what the current, what those elements are of the current code and how that's going to change, whether it's combined or not, even if it's a standalone district before and after, you know, any, any of those kind of changes that are being proposed, that those are called out-
Sure.
...so that there's full disclosure and transparency.
Sure. And, and I understand that we've done that in the past, and we'd be happy to do that. Right now, we're, we're still kind of in that review process with, with staff. But once we get a little further in the process, once we, we'd be happy to lay that, that out that way.
And I was gonna state, oh, sorry, go ahead.
With regards to the R3 and the R3B, the difference between the two in terms of lot area was 13,000 square feet to 12,000 square feet?
I'm, I'm well aware, they-
That's why we marked it to so my, my-
It wasn't 16 years ago, which is an issue that came up, which is why 3B came into existence. And I don't want us to go backwards, that's all.
Yeah, and I wanted to bring up that we still owe comments back from the staff level. So as you're looking at these charts, they may not be the final item. It's just what is kind of being proposed to move forward and start the discussion at this point in time.
And the, and then I guess the other one, this is still a draft, if you go back to the beekeeping one, that's one I hope we flagged, because we just went through that.
Correct, yeah, we did.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's actually something I wasn't, I wasn't aware of. So what was the, the beekeeping issue?
Well, in certain districts.
Yeah, there's certain areas it is. Okay, so that-
Yeah, the comments will get back.
We'll have it. Okay.
We'll have it identified for you.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, that, that one can be a hot-button one, and, you know, I bring it up because there are a lot of, a lot of views on that. So, you know, I would rather discuss that now than have you guys discuss it later, but it sounds like you've already discussed it. So, yeah, you know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel if there's been a recent change. Another thing that we're, we're waiting to plug in is council's decision on marijuana uses. So whenever we get that, we'll, we'll feed that in to our projects.
It may be a while, but sure.
Enforcement, we're working through with some, some edits on this. I'm doing some, some legal research there. But I, I feel real confident that we're gonna have a much better process for you guys at the end. This is an area that I, I do think there'll be some changes, much, much more than we typically do when we do these ordinances. So I will, again, this, this will be something we'll flag for planning commission and for council. We've done it, we've, we have a way of doing it in a chart that can kind of show here's, here are the changes. But yeah, so there, again, I think you'll have a much cleaner process for enforcement. One of the things that's so important is having every land use defined. We, we have that in the draft now. And then also not having different definitions from your zoning and subdivision ordinances. Those, those are things that, having been in Tim and Austin's shoes, would always drive me crazy when I, when I was working in for the city, to have someone ask me, have a planning commission, what exactly does this land use mean, and kind of have to say, well, it's open to interpretation. And so that's one thing that, you know, it is, I think, more important than most people realize, is how to define those land uses. So again, that's something as a planning commissioner, if you have a real firm belief on how something should be defined, then please take a look at it as we're going through the adoption process. So that's all I had today. Again, this is a pretty high-level discussion, but I wanna give you guys an idea of where we're at. Still a lot of edits that can be made, still a lot of work to be done. But I can definitely see it coming together. And again, one area that was a little, we were kind of conflicted when we were writing a draft of how to handle is the landscaping. So again, we have an- the adoption process. So, that's all I had today. Again, this is a pretty high-level discussion, but I want to give you guys an idea of where we're at. Still a lot of edits that can be made, still a lot of work to be done, but I can definitely see it coming together. And again, one area that was a little, we were kind of conflicted when we were writing a draft of how to handle is the landscaping. So, again, we have an exercise tonight to try to get a little more feedback from the advisory group to, so we can understand better to draft that portion of the code. But with that, are there any questions you guys have about the process or anything that you want to make sure is going to be in the draft and/or anything that may be a question about how we think we're addressing something today? And so, yeah, I'll just open up the floor for any questions.
In terms of enforcement, if you had problems in the past where remedies were not sufficient to cause somebody not to willfully disobey the code.
Yeah.
How are you dealing with that here?
Yeah, well, one way we typically do, and I can't remember if this is in your code today, and remind me if it's not, but it will be in the code, is every day that there is, something is in violation, then legally, you can have a different violation notice for that. And so, I see quite typically communities where you only get fined once for it, and there's nothing in the code that says each day is a new violation. And so, that counts up the clock and basically creates it somewhere to where if you're being charged just $50, the next day is $100, and it starts to increase quite dramatically. But without that phraseology in the code, there's no real other way to do that. But legally, you can, and that's something we always recommend.
One additional thing that we're potentially looking at, Mr. Wilkie, is we currently operate on a criminal procedure process, so if somebody breaks, is in violation, we file in the municipal court. It takes two to three weeks for that person to get served and even show up to court, if they even show up. We haven't had a very good success rate of them showing up anymore, so what we're doing is taking around the idea of a civil enforcement process, a civil offense in addition to the criminal offense, meaning similar to somebody speeds and gets a ticket from a police officer, it would allow good enforcement staff to write essentially a ticket for a financial offense.
Yeah. And I feel quite confident to have that process. There's a section of state code that's not really well-known that, I don't, I'm not sure how many cities use it, but there is a section of state code that allows for that non-criminal civil enforcement. My belief with enforcement is, in my, the way I write this, is to give local governments as many options as they possibly can for the enforcement, because the more options you have, the better, I mean, just the better off in general you are. But those options really need to be spelled out in the code. So, those are a couple of things. The other thing I would mention is, through legal research, I've realized that, and I know staff likes this idea, is that service can be electronic legally, and that's another way to speed up the process, because I know that since we've been with staff, that's been an issue in the past as well.
And there are other mechanisms that I think we're talking about in the code or in related-type future legislation. I see you called it out, demo by neglect. I think we're going to see a much stronger codified section on that. We're also looking at introducing a vacant structures ordinance that helps regulate it from that standpoint. We also have been developing a residential, a rental inspection program, similar to what Sydney and Pickwa and some of our neighboring, well, Tip City as well, have done. That won't be in this process, but it'll be at the same time because it's, we kind of all wanted to, we want to make that all go together. So, just some different avenues. I mean, you know that Grant, our law director, has told us that there's only so much we can do as far as writing penalties, and, you know, we can't be usurious, if you will, when we, when we find somebody, but, and we've all been frustrated with how small the penalties are, and even when you double them and people get caught, it's not enough of an incentive, hasn't been enough of incentive to stop the behavior.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I don't remember whether you have that. Do you have the accumulative day process?
Ooh.
Okay. What is stopping that from not working today? That's an issue that, I know we brought it.
In order for you to scale an offense, we have two avenues we can go. We have an avenue of we can file an additional charge for every single day. We also have an avenue that we can increase the degree of the misdemeanor if they get a conviction in court. Problem with that is you have to actually get a conviction, meaning if they show up to court, be found guilty, and most of the time, they plead not guilty, and then we work it out pre-trial.
Yeah.
And then, the court doesn't always take kindly to seeing 30 consecutive day violations when it's basically the same violation.
Oh, yeah, okay.
They don't really share our enthusiasm.
Okay, that, I appreciate you mentioning that to me. That's, there are some judges who would take a different view of that. But, one, and this isn't really a code thing, but I've had success when I was in similar positions to Tim and Austin with getting the judge to, I'll kind of do a warning and say, you know, if you don't pay by this amount of time, then this 30 days is going to kick in. There may be a way to write that in the code to make, to make your judge a little more comfortable with the approach, I guess would be a good way to put it. But, that's, that is something, I mean, a lot of, you know, a lot of jurisdictions get really frustrated by that, but, you know, I think, yeah, we can kind of dive into the weeds, but I do think there may be a way to tweak the language to make it a little more, the judge be a little more comfortable with when it kicks in.
Mr. Chair, I got a couple of questions, if I may. I must, you got more? Okay. So, you've been talking about the UDC. We've also got the subdivision regulations as part of that. Is that going to follow this UDC, or is it all going to be presented at the same time?
It'll all be presented at the same time.
Okay, great. So, that brings up two things. First of all, a comment, and I guess this goes back to Austin and Tim, who can probably delegate, so Andrew, you as well. Monday night, we had a significantly overly comprehensive discussion at one of the committees where Matt's response to the three questions that the committee chair had asked at, I don't know, a month or two ago.
Yeah.
He wanted it brought back up for further discussion. The committee as a whole, well, the committee chair continues to push to have immediate modifications to the subdivision regulations related to new subdivisions and a requirement that recreational trails, bike paths, et cetera, be an absolute requirement of every subdivision as a way to further our, over our long-term objective of connectivity, non-vehicular connectivity throughout the community. A noble cause, not a cheap one, and the, two of the three members of the committee, not including the chair, recognized the staff's position that we're doing an update to the subdivision regulations, that, you know, we can make some version of that, whether it's an absolute or not, part of those, part of those, any amendments that are recommended. So, we want to make sure that that happens.
Sure.
That's not to say that, you know, it should be 100% every time, but it should be addressed, and so I just wanted to say that here. I would encourage the staff to forward the link to Dave and to Matt about the discussion on Monday night related to that. If you'd be so kind as to isolate the exact times that those were, because it did go long, and it was a longer committee than was maybe necessary. So, I don't think you want to go through the first four committees before you got to that one. Timing-wise on the UDC slash subdivision regulations coming for, you know, coming to completion or to the point where you've had a final recommendation to the Planning Commission and then council?
Yeah, and I think that's the timeline we need to nail down with staff. I'm, generally speaking, I see us having one more advisory committee meeting probably in February to go through things, and then that's when we would start moving towards that adoption.
Okay. So, maybe end the first quarter, early second quarter, you think?
Yeah, with the adoption process you put out, that's probably realistic.
Well, I know you can't really control the adoption process if it goes back and forth at the council level.
Sure.
And there have been some rezonings and other zoning-related matters that might go, I think, what's our record, eight, nine readings? I'm not saying that it will happen here, but it's not unprecedented.
Yeah. No, I think the timeline, we're looking at one more, again, one more of the advisory committee to make, get them comfortable with where we're at. We might then have another one maybe in March, just for them to approve, but it'd be one more working session, I guess you'd say. Okay, yeah, all good questions. Any other questions the Planning Commission has?
Here ain't none.
Thank you, David.
All right, thank you.
See you tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Experiment with the wrong one.
Is there any other business?
No, sir.
Okay, without any other business, entertain a motion for adjournment.
No moves.
A second.
Motion of seconds for adjournment. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Here ain't none, we are adjourned.